We are used to punch card and then vacuum tubes. The second generation we are using in nineteen fifty to ninety six is transistors. And third generation we are using in nineteen sixty to ninety seventy. That is an operational amplifier. In fourth generation, we are using microprocessor and then microcontroller. And fifth generation, as usual, every people will be know A I artificial intelligence. So now I can start with the first generations is vacuum tube and then a punch card. The vacuum tube and then the punch card. So on that time our system in room size. The room size we are used only the two type of applications, one is additions, another one is separations. In the second generation, the maximum electronic device is boom, that is a transistor. So transistors are used for amplifications. So especially electronic peoples are very much involved in these generations. And then third generations we are using the A P A M. You can call that name is I C seven four one. So integrated circuit. And then fourth generation, the microprocessor. So before you can see the three generations, we are used only the hardware components. The fourth generation, the microprocessor, we are giving the input of hardware and also the software. And then in microcontrol also like that. And then advance of microcontrol is embedded and then V L S I. So everyone know about the embedded. It is also combination of hardware and then software. And then the V L S I people little bit only know that is that will be used only the chip, chip designing. So it will be used in undiget, ar gate. So if you are going to give the input is zero someone's. And final generations you are going to use as a A I. So now we can go to the basic things of components. So first of all you can going to see the resistors. So everyone know why you are using of resistors. So first you are going to see the resistors color coding. So races, you know the unit of racer is home. So how to find this color now? So people will be know the basics. B B Roy, great Britain, very good wife. So first color is, first color is black. And then second one is brown and then R will be represented as a red. And then O will be represented as orange and Y will be represented as yellow. So B B Roy and then G will be represented as green, gray, bitten blue will be represented as blue. And then B will be represented as blue and then violet and then gray and then white. So just I will show this color. It will be start with black, brown and then red, orange, yellow likewise you can. So you can see the colors like that. So once again I will say that slogan is B B Roy, great Britain, very good wife. So it will be start with zero, its color is black, the end with the color is white. So resistance are generally going to use for if you give any nine volt battery connected to the L E D. So before the L E D you can connect the resistors to protect the L E D. So battery power supply is nine volt power supply, it cannot possible to connect it to the L E D. If you give directly supply to the L E D automatically L E D will be damaged. So we can protect can using of resistors, okay? Next we can move to the capacitors. So you know generally in capacitors before the resistors, no polarities are there in the resistors. Okay, in these capacitors you have the polarity. So longer term is positive, smaller one is negative. So what is the purpose of using of capacitors? It is, it is charging and then discharging. And then unit is farer. Resistance unit you know that is a ohms, the capacitor unit is farer. And the next one is inductor. So inductor unit is pick off a entry, inductor, inductor's unit is entry. It is we using for block the D C allow A C. Okay, and then next I am going to tell about the L E D. So L E D abbreviation is light emitting diode. So it is also having the two terminal, longer terminal is positive and then a smaller one is negative. So now you can give the positive supply to the anode and then the negative supply to the cathode, battery supply. And then I will move to the next one, that is the transistors. So generally transistors are having a two type. One is N P N, another one is P N P. So N P N number you can going to use as B C one not seven, P N P is B C one not eight. So you have the three terminals in transistor, collector, base and then emitter. So as it is N P N also like that, base, emitter and then collector. The base you are going to give the input, collector you can going to give the plus supply, V C C supply. Emitter always connected to ground. So generally transistor going to use for the amplifications. So this is the difference, this one is a N P N and this one is a P N P. N P N maximum going to use because maximum efficiency will be produced in N P N. So first preference you are going to use for the N P N, not using P N P. And then we can move to the next one is I C triple five timer. So it has eight pin, so first pin is ground, second pin is trigger and third pin is output. And fourth pin is reset and then fifth pin is control voltage. Sixth pin is threshold and seventh pin is discharge and final supply voltage is plus V C C. So what is the purpose of using of I C triple five timers? For example, I am saying now. So before we are using the traffic light, so one manual person will be operate the light, it will be on and off. So now you are connected to I C triple five, you can set the time for generally you know traffic light. Totally you can use as a three light, one is red and then yellow and third one is green. So now I can set the value for the red and then green and then yellow. So in the timer itself I can set and then automatically no need the manual power, so it will be changing automatically. So this is the purpose we are using as a I C triple five timers. So now we can move to the next one is L D R. The abbreviation of L D R is light dependent resistors. So why you can use for the L D R now? In the dark surface automatically you can use for the L D R, light will be on and off conditions. So these are the basic components we are using in the electronics. Now we can move to the main microcontroller. So this is a name you can call this a adreno. So in the microcontroller you can going to use as a adreno U one O, adreno nano. And then third one is adreno mega. But maximum people will be prefer for adreno U one O. Okay, cost wise and then performance wise it will be good. And then even though you can use as a nano, the size will be very small but everything will be working in the same principles. So now I will explain about the adreno. So in this adreno will be segregated into three segregations. One is analog signal, another one is digital and third one is power supply. So this, this side you can going to use for the digital signal and then opposite these pins are indicated as a analog. And then in this portion you can go and use this here power supply. Okay, first of all I will tell you about the analog. Totally six pins A not two, A five, so totally six pins A not A one to A five. And then in this section you are going to use as a power supply. So V not, sorry V in plus V C C and then plus five volt and then three point five volt and then to ground. So in this power supply you are going to give in this side. In opposite side totally you are given the pin is thirteen pin numbers you have, zero to thirteen. And then first zero will be represented as T X and second, second number will be represented, represented as a R X. T X is nothing but transmitter and then R X will be a receiver. So totally thirteen pins are there in the digital. So in this circuit also you can use as a crystal oscillators. So crystal oscillators are using to maintain this stable power supply into the adreno board. So adreno board is nothing but it is a combination of hardware and then software. So just I can show the picture how the pin will be defined in the adreno board. So in this side will be connected as a digital pins. So opposite side will be connected in analog and then power supply, okay? So now I can move to the next one. So first of all I will tell you about the sensors. So what are the sensor you are going to use for the in I O Ts? So first one is ultrasonic sensors. So generally in ultrasonic sensors you have the four pin. First pin is V C C, second pin is trigger and third one is echo and fourth pin is ground. So totally four pin we are using in the ultrasonic sensor. So what is the purpose of using of ultrasonic sensor? You can avoid the obstacle avoidance. So that is the main purpose you are going to use for the ultrasonic sensor. Now we can move to the next one, is I R sensor. So I R sensors are having the three pin like plus V C C and then second pin is ground. And third pin is you are going to connect for digital output pin, okay? So what is the purpose of using of I R? You know I R is abbreviation is infrared ray sensors. Even though the remote control you are controlling the T V and also A C. And then before you are using the cell phone, nowadays you are connecting through the Bluetooth Wi Fi like that. Before you are connecting everything in the I R only. So I R is very much important in all electronic devices. So nowadays only we are using as a ultrasonic sensor but I R is very much implement in the all the robotic. So I R mainly going to use for line follower experiments. If you connected to I R, one line will be defined the white color, another line will be identified as a black color. If you are create one robot, we can connect the two I R, I R sensors. So automatically car will be following in the line followers. So maximum experiments will be going to do in the I R. And then next one is servo motor. So next one is servo motor. So servo motor will be rotated and zero to three sixty degree. So if you are going to give the program of clockwise and then anti clockwise. So, so in this servo motors are having a three pin. So first pin is connected in power supply, that is a red color. Then brown is ground and third one is orange. The color will be going to give us a P W M, that is a pulse with modulation. And then the next one is L C D monitor, liquid crystal display. So you have the several pins. So just you can give the so many pins or you are going to connect it. So overcome, just you can add one more thing is I two C. So if you are connected into the L C D display after I two C, you have only the four pins. One is ground, another one is V C C and third pin is S D A and final one is S C L. So before you can connect so many connections, just if you are connected in I two C, you have only the four pins. So these are the details I will give. Ground always connected to ground in the adreno, V C C are going to give the plus five volt and then S D A. S D A is nothing but serial data pin and then S C L is serial clock pin. So these are the main components you are going to connect it in the adreno boards, okay? Let's see, we will see the hands on training. So the simulator, the simulator name is A C to D C lab simulators. So in this simulator, so this, this designing will be like a breadboard. And then you can choose all the components in this, in the upper side, okay? So already I mentioned this one is a L E D and then we are going to connect in the L E Ds. So you can choose the battery. So just I can choose the battery also and then I can rotate the battery now. So positive will be connected in this side. And then negative sign will be connected in the negative. So automatically L E D will be glowing. So just you can see before itself I mentioned, the L E D cannot be give the nine volt power supply. So in this battery I will give only the one point five volt supply only. So that's why light will be glowing, otherwise if I give nine volt power supply automatically L E D will be gone, okay? So now I can change the L E D now. So before the L E D connect, just I can add one switch also. So I will choose this switch, so I will connect it here. So I can use the switch on and off conditions. So what are the components are available, just you can check it. So I, I just I can using of battery and then L E D and then switch. So now I will show one demo now, I will change the power supply now. I change the value of one point five volt. Nine volt power supply. See, if I am changing the automatically L E D is burned. So, so just I can change the value of battery supply automatically L E D is burned. So now I can overcome this problem, just I can connect one resistors. Choose the resistors color. So now I am going to set the value. First one is brown. And second one is black. And third one is red, brown, black, red. So value is thousand. So value is thousand ohms. That will be equal to one kilo ohms. Now I will connect it here. So now L E D is glowing. So what now we can understand what are, what are the main purpose you are going to connect for the resistors. So just I can tell you, please note down the resistance color value. These are the resistance only we are going to use regularly. Brown, black, red is one kilo ohm. Brown, black, orange is ten kilo ohm. Brown, black, yellow is hundred kilo ohms. And then brown, black, green is one zero ohms. So these are the resistors only you are using regularly. And then red, red, brown, that is a two twenty ohms. And then orange, orange, brown is a three thirty ohms. So once again I can repeat, these are the regular resistance only you are using for this circuit. First one is brown, black, red, that is a one kilo ohms. Brown, black, orange, that is a ten kilo ohms. Brown, black, yellow, that is a hundred kilo ohms. Brown, black, green, that is a one mega ohms. And then red, red, orange is two twenty ohms. Orange, orange, brown, that is a three thirty ohms. These kind of ratios only we are using in the regular format. So the basic components are connected in the breadboard. And then you are connected to the wires and then you are checking the each components. Okay, let I will show in the hands on, hands on training model. So this one is a breadboard. So the breadboard will be segregated into three positions. Upper and then middle and then lower. In the upper and lower you can connect the positive and the negative signs. And then in between only you are connecting the components. So this the name can called as a breadboard. So it will be segregated into upper, middle and then lower. Then upper and then lower can connect the positive and the negative power supply. In between only you are connecting the components. So now I will going to connect the components. So first. So this one is a L E D. So this one is a L E D. So just you can see the two terminal, longer one is positive and then smaller one is negative. So now I am going to connect it in middle of the breadboard. So now I am going to take one register. Because my battery power supply is nine volt power supply. So directly if you give the power supply to the L E D automatically, L E D will be damaged. So before I will connect to the resistors. In positive side I will connect one resistors. And then now I will check whether the L E D will be working or not. The positive sign will be given to the resistance and the negative sign will be given to the L E D. So now L E D is going, okay? So just before I will show the breadboard, you can connect the connection in the series. This one is parallel and then this one is again series, like I, okay? So in between only you are going to connect the components. Again I will show how to connect the components. First you can connect one resistors. So resistors value is one kilo ohms, brown, black, red. So first I will connect one register. Again I will take one L E D. Longer one is positive and smaller one is negative. Okay, and then I will take the power supply, a nine volt power supply. Just I will connect the resistors in positive. The negative supply I will give. Just I will show again. So automatically light will be glowing, okay? So now I connect the power supply to the resistance and the negative will be connected in the L E D. So just I can remove, just I can add one more switch now. Just switching pressing on and off. And third one. So this one is a capacitors. Already I am told, the unit of capacity is picofarad. Just I will connect. Just you can, just you can see the output. So now I am connector resistors and then L E D and then capacitor. Just you can closely you can look up. Now I will take the power supply. Before I give the power supply, L E D is glowing. Just I can remove, just you can see. Even the supply will be going to through the capacitors. So already I mentioned capacitor is going to use for the charging and then discharging. So you can maintain some power in the capacitors. So capacitor will be given the little bit power supply to the L E D. So these are the basic things you are going to do in the breadboard. So we will go to the short break. We will back after ten minutes break.
We are faculty members, we will start the session. Just you can note down before you can do everything through the simulation. The basic components are connected in DC AC lab, just you can note down. DC AC lab simulator. So in this simulator you can choose the component of basic. What other components are available now, resistors, LED, battery supply, everything will be available in this simulator. So once I can tell you, please note down DC AC lab simulator. So now you can move to the next one is Arduino simulator. So this name you can call as here, WOKI, W O K W I. Just you can note down, W O K W I. So if you choose this one, so now we are going to choose as a Arduino. You want know. And then you can choose this one. So simultaneously you can give the program and then you can run the program and then activate the device in the components. So already I show this one is Arduino, you want know. So in this side you can going to use for the digital things. Another side you are going to use as a analog and then this portion you are going to use for the digital, sorry, power supply. Okay, so now I will show some examples. Just I will show some difference between these two. Before you are connected the DC AC lab, connected one components through the breadboard and then you can use for the resistors like that. But now in the Arduino board, if you are give the program, the program will run the help of components. Just I will show the components now. So you can choose the components. So first you can choose the LED. So I will take the LED in this side. So if you are needed any color you can change it. Choose it on red or green or any color you can choose. Likewise, you can change any colors, so I will prefer for red. So now I am going to connect the connections. So in this LED have two terminal. So one terminal is positive, another terminal is negative. So this terminal name can called as a positive terminal. I will going to connect it in thirteenth pin number, one digital pin number. Another pin number is connected to ground. So now I am going to give the program. Just you can see the program. So in this program, I am going to write as a void setup. So generally LED is a output pin. So I define this bulletin is thirteen pin number. So you can write it in the void setup, pin mode, LED bulletin and then output. LED is generally output. So now I can define bulletin is thirteen pin number, so I will connect it in thirteen. So again another terminal will be connected in a grounded. So now we can go to the setup of void loop. So first you can write the digital right, LED bulletin high. So I will give the delay time is thousand. Again LED bulletin will be low. High value is one, low value is zero. That is high is mentioned as an on condition, low will be mentioned as a off conditions. So now I will be set the delay time, thousand milliseconds equal to one second. Just you can note down, delay time is thousand milliseconds equal to one second. So even the on time I will mention as a thousand milliseconds and then low time I can mention as a mention as a one seconds. So in this program generally you are going to use. So just you can see the program. So I will choose one LED. So through the program, in generally we are going to use as a one is void setup. Another one is void loop. So in the void setup, you are going to define the pin mode, LED bulletin output. So define the pin numbers. Just you can see initialize the digital pin LED bulletin as a output. LED is a output. So now I will define the void setup is pin mode pin number. And then next one is void loop. So in this void loop, you are going to set as a LED will be on and then off. That is on will be mentioned as I and low will be mentioned as a off conditions. So delay time will be given. So delay time will be given as a thousand milliseconds. So thousand milliseconds equal to one second. Let's you can. Just I can run this Arduino board, let's see how the LED is glowing. Just you can see. So L E D is glowing on and off conditions of one second, just once again you can on and off conditions. So if I am stop the process, if I am change the value of thousand to five thousand likewise delay time and on and off. If you change the delay time automatically L E D will be on and off will be different. Okay, the single L E D you can write this kind of program. Next we are going to see as a traffic light. Okay, generally in the traffic light in especially in railroad track, you know three different colors. One is red, another one is green and third one is yellow. So the same experiment only I am going to do now. First of all I will choose the L E D. So first L E D is red. And then again I will choose the second L E D. It's green. And then third one is. Third one is green. So this one is a negative one. Generally you know two terminals. So this one is a negative of first L E D and second L E D you have the negative and third one, this one is a third negative. So the three negative pin that is a ground, negative pin will be connected into ground. And then remaining is three positive pins. So you can give the digital pins. Let's see the program. So this is the connections you are going to connect for the traffic light. So you are going to choose as a red and then yellow and third one is green. See how the connections are connected. So ground will be connected in three L E D grounded. So first L E D ground will be connected in second L E D ground. And second L E D ground will be connected in, but ground is mentioned as a negative one. And second L E D will be connected in third L E D negative. And then remaining you can see the positive sign will be connected through the registers and then it will be connected in one digital pin. So pin number will be connected in ten, nine and then eight. And then you can give the power supply. Okay, now you can go to see the program. Just you can see the program. So now already I have mentioned before you are connected one L E D, what are the programs you wrote now, wide setup and then wide loop. So if you are choosing as a one L E D, so first you can define the L E D pins. So before you are connect the L E D, we connected one one L E D in bulletin, that is a L E D is a output. L E D output pin will be connected in thirteen, previous one you can see. So now we are choosing as a three pin. A red pin will be connected in ten and yellow pin will be connected in nine and then green pin will be connected in eight. So these are the pins are digital. So L E D will be output. Generally L E D is a output pin, so now you are defining as a each pin as a digital numbers. So this one is a digital side, so positive sign will be connected into the digital pins. And then again you can see the wide setup. So pin mode red is the output and pin mode yellow is the output and pin mode green is the output. So now you can go to the program. Just you can compare similarly you can compare to the previous one. Single L E D you are going to set in the wide loop, digital right L E D is high and you can give the delay time and then L E D is. Digital low, again you have the delay is thousand, now you can see the program in digital right. Now I can set the L E D rate high, so delay time I will give as a fifteen thousand. Already I have mentioned thousand milliseconds equal to one second. So I will give you a fifteen thousand, fifty thousand equal to fifteen second. So I will set as a digital red and low. Again I will set the digital right for the yellow eye. So delay time I set as a one second. Again I will choose as a yellow because yellow will be blinking continuously, you know generally the traffic light. So red light it will be have some fifteen seconds, then after fifty seconds you. Yeah, a yellow light will be blinking of certain seconds, so that's why I can keep the five hundred delay. So likewise I will set the delays like that. So again I will set the yellow is high and low five hundred, thousand and then five hundred. Again I can set the yellow is high and low five hundred and then thousand. Now just you can change it into the green. Green, you can set the delay time is two thousand iron low. Again I will change into the yellows. So major role will be going to do for the yellow only. So these are the programs only I am set for this traffic light controller, just I can show it. First you can define the pin numbers. Red color pin number is ten, yellow pin number is nine and green pin number is eight. Again I will choose the pin mode in wide setup. It will be output for L E D, so just I can choose as a red is output and yellow is the output and green is output. Again on each L E D I can define some value of delay times. Yellow only can support for the red and also the green. Okay, let us we can go into connect the pin connections. So first pin will be connected, just you can look up red, it pin number will be connected in. Digital pin ten. And then a yellow, yellow pin will be connected in nine. And then third one, green will be connected in. Eight. So just you can see this one, this one, this terminal is positive. The positive pin will be connected in ten, first pin number ten. And then second L E D pin will be connected in nine and third L E D will be connected in eight. So remaining we will be going to connect it in the grounded. So first one I will go into connected in ground one. And then second one, second, second negative pin will be connected in. Round number two and then third one, third L E D will be connected in round number third. So now connection is over. And then if you are going to connect it in simulation. You know already L E D if you queue directly above five volt power supply, L E D will be born. But now I am given through the simulators, so no need to connect the registers. I know if you connect the register even though L E D will be glowing well. So just I will connect the digital pin in the digital pin numbers ten, nine and eight. Let's see. Just you can see how L E D is glowing, just you can see the second also. So I have mentioned here fifteen, fifteen thousand, that is a fifteen second, just you can see the second now. After fifteen automatically light will be changed for the yellow. So I will set the yellow value, just you can see the, see the delay time for the yellow five hundred and then thousand. Then it will be moved to the green, that is at two thousand. The two second after two thousand. Sorry, after twenty thousand it will be go to the again yellow. So thousand and then five hundred, so automatically it will be changed. So just you can see the previous one and then in this traffic light. So first you can choose a single L E D, we are choose as one digital pin. We set the delay time of thousand. Same experiment although also we are doing as a traffic light L E D. It will be choose as a two different colors of red, green and then yellow. So automatically we will set, set the program, delay time automatically will be changing. So first of all I will tell you, I will start at the basic of D C A C lab and then I will show some breadboard components. How we are connected in the breadboard of L E D and then nine volt power supply and capacitors. These are the components are connected through in analog methodology. So you are needed on that time transistor is needed, on that time you are needed for I C triple five and then L D R is needed. So that's why I can show the before how the technologies are developed in the olden versions to new versions. So that's why I mentioned the tech- recent trend of technology and the generation of technology I have showed the first slide. This one. So the generation will be started in the nineteen thirties to nineteen forties, you are used only the puncher guard and then back and fuse. So on the time the computer size is room size, we are only are using, using as addition and the operations. Now you can see how the technologies are developed in the microcontroller and then microprocessor. Okay, now we can implement it in A A with the help of machine learning and then deep learning. So machine learning is nothing but just it can give the program likewise what I have done in the experiment, that is a example of machine learning. If you give the programming to the device, it will be program will be operate the devices. So what program I am going to give automatically system will be working. So that is the purpose you are going to use for the machine learning. So and then just I can tell you the what heading I will given in the slide. Introductions to I O T implementations. So now I can show everything in microcontroller. Yes, just see what the difference you having for this one and then I O T now. The already I am before itself I can mention three type of Arduino board you are going to use. One is you all know, another one is nano and third one is mega. So in this Arduino board you are going to connect only the connections and then through the programming you are connected. Likewise I mentioned already ultrasonic sensor, I R servo motor and then these are things will be connected. And also you can go into use for the Bluetooth connection also. But what R A B A C you are using in the Arduino now, it cannot be connected as in Wi-Fi connections. So that is a major advantages you are going to use in the I O T. A same microcontroller, but you are going to use as a microcontroller is E E S P double six, A A two double six. So another one is thirty two, double six and thirty two in build you have the I O, I O D S Wi-Fi. So that device is also like a microcontroller. In the microcontroller having the I O T processor. So automatically it will be connected to the Wi-Fi. So Wi-Fi, what is the purpose of your connecting the Wi-Fi, you know the heading name is I O T. The abbreviation of I O T is internet of things. You can control all things in your mobile itself, the internet itself you can connect. So right now I am doing this experiment. In front of the component only I will connect it and then I will show that output. But at the same time if I am using in the I O T. In any places the network connection is proper, I can use it in any places. That is a major advantages to having in the I O T. So that's why people will be prefer for this device thirty two and then double six. So automatically you are connected in the mobile phone and then you can easily to operate like example C C T V. So if you have the C C T V in your home, you can watch everything through the mobile app itself. So in the mobile app itself you can see who, what are the, who are the persons will be coming in your area. And then what the work is we be going, everything you can see through in the C C T V itself. So one of the great example you are going to use for the I O T. So the same component that is also the name you can call the same microcontroller. E S P thirty two and then double six. So what difference we have for these two now? One is and the Arduino board cannot be connected through the I O Ts. But in the same microcontroller E S P thirty two and then double six, you have the I O T terms you are. In device you have the Wi-Fi easily to connect and then you can use in the mobile phones. So that is a similar have in the Arduino and then E S P thirty two and then double six. Let me see another experiment you can do. First of all I will show the connections how we are going to connect. So next, next one name is ultrasonic sensor to connect it with the servo motor. So this is a program. So generally you know in ultrasonic sensor have four pin. One is plus V C C, another one is trigger pin and third one is echo and fourth pin is ground. So now trigger pin will be connected in nine, echo pin will be connected in eight. And then next one is servo motor. In servo motor pin will be connected in seven, just you can see the pin number will be connected in seven. I will show that picture. So this one is ultrasonic sensor. So in this ultrasonic sensor you have the four pins, one is plus V C C, trigger, echo and then ground, so totally four pins. So always plus V C C will be connected in five volt, ground always connected to ground. And then trigger will be connected in digital pin of nine and eight. And then this one is servo motor. So servo motors are going to connect it in three pins. One is plus V C C is five volt and then second one is ground pin, brown is the ground and third pin is. You are going to connect it in the digital, that is a pin number seven, that is a P W M pulse width modulation. I choose first one is ultrasonic sensor. And second one is servo motor. So just you can see the program. So trigger pin is connected is nine. So I will choose the trigger, will be connected in ninth pin number. And then what is the next one, echo pin, echo pin will be connected in eight. Eight is connected. And then remaining two pins, plus V C C. So plus V C C will be connected in. So plus V C C will be connected in. Five volt power supply. And then last one is ground, ground pin will be connected in ground. So and then next one is servo motor. So first pin connected in ground. Ground is connected to ground. Another one is plus V C C. So plus V C, five volt power supply are connected. And then third one, third one is. Digital pin, the digital pin will be connected in seven, pin number is seven. So trigger is nine, echo is eight and then trigger pin will be connected in seven. Okay, so connection is over. Then I will explain the program. So generally you are go- going to initiate in the first. In the program you are going to segregate it in the three part, first one is initiate, first you can choose the pin, second one is uh wide setup. The wide setup you can declare the output, ultrasonic sensor and then servo motor. And finally, final one is wide loop, in the wide loop you can choose the if, if, if program. So you can write the digital right, low value and then high value and then you can keep the distance, so distance equal to duration of. Zero point zero three four divided by two. So just now I can run this program now. So I will install this server, servo library. See, now I can measure the distance. I will show how the servo motor is working. If I measure the. Distance, automatically servo motor will be. Changing the side, directions of clockwise and then anti-clockwise. Just you can see, if I measure the distance. The servo motor is moving on one direction to another directions. So you can do in this project relevant to. Dustbin, smart dustbin and then car parking. These are the project will be doing through in ultrasonic and then servo motors. At the same time you are going to do in the I O T, you can control through the mobile itself. Okay, now you can see the simulator, vice you can see, that tomorrow sessions will be see the. Practical sections how we can connect it in the L E D in Arduino board, remaining things will be discussed on tomorrow. Thank you.